From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Outstanding, Ms. Nations' report on actions taken in closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the closed session agenda from this morning's board meeting, Item 43 on the closed session agenda was not conducted. Items 43, 45, 44, 45, and 46 were held, and there is no reportable action for any of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nations. We'll kick off this morning's meeting with a review of the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the board, member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So going through the agenda, under hearings, Planning and Natural Resources Department, Items 3 and 4. Under Departmental Requests, Planning and Natural Resources Department, Items 5 through 9. Public Works Department is Items 10 through 13. County Administrative Office is 15 through 19. General Services Division is 20 through 23, 25 through 29. And the County Administrative Office Human Resources Division is Item 33 through 38. Consideration for ordinance introduced on December 13, 2016, Items 39, and matters for executive approval, Items 40 through 44. Does any member of the public wish to make comment on any of these consent agenda items? Yes, ma'am, if you do, come on down. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Anita Beecher is my name, B-E-C-H-E-R-E-R. I'm here because I wanted to lobby on behalf of the library. I hope I'm speaking. Can I generally, is that okay?
Can you just, can you, Ms. Beecher, can you just grab a seat there for a minute? We're going to have you an opportunity to speak in the public presentations in just a minute.
That'll be perfect.
So we'd like to hear from you, so don't go far.
Okay, if it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Consent agenda. Hearing none, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it to the board for comment and consideration.
Motion to consent.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Now, for public presentations, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board in any manner, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may ask questions, may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes, and Ms. Beecher, you can kick us off.
I'm a current student at BC and a current Eastside resident, and I've been watching the library funding. We got 52 percent of the vote for the library. I know it's not enough. Recently, I'm sorry, I'm trying to go big picture to small picture. I've been concerned as a citizen because my retiring teachers have said that casually and separately, when they are retiring for their journalism industry, they said, "If the newspapers will be around in five years." And it scares me because I don't want to be a citizen without a newspaper. And complementary to that, I don't want to be a citizen without the library. And on that note, I know that our head librarian is retiring, and I'm appealing to you as a board members to please assess a new librarian carefully. Please don't let her or he be from LSSI. I don't want a privatized library, and I don't want someone who used to work with them. Please look for a local person who'd be loyal to Kern County, because I love Kern County. And I would like them to be, have an undergrad in a STEM, in a STEM, STEM science background with a bachelor's, because I think that they have a well, a well, how can I say this? Sorry, I'm so nervous.
Don't worry.
They're very thoughtful in their actions, and I appreciate literature majors and I appreciate philosophy majors, but I think this county needs some real blue-collar people who really get in and get dirty in terms of interacting with everybody. I know that the Eastside is a little scary to a lot of people, but we need the libraries more than ever. Just yesterday, on the news, there was a Jamaican, he wasn't even the lead librarian in that library, but there was a Jamaican librarian who went to the homeless centers and read to those children. And it was so cool to me because it was like, we have a homeless center on California, and that place, I couldn't even get my friend, a friend, a tenant, there was a previous tenant, anyway, I couldn't get her on the waiting list. The homeless centers are full. And if we had a librarian who could do some outreach to people who are scary, to me, it just looks like, they just don't want to acknowledge that the Eastside exists, and we need, we need education, and we need an informed populace. And I'm not without information. The two ideas I wanted to come for was those weed stores that are popping up everywhere. California has legislated that they're allowed. Can I speak to, on behalf of the library, to reserve and accumulate those revenues that are coming from the weed stores? And then what about the 10 cents that we're getting taxed on for those bags? I know that the government doesn't work that fast to harvest all that 10 cents from when the election happened to when they enacted it, which was the day after the election. Can we not let that money leave the county? Can we let that money, please, go towards the librarian and the libraries and keep the bookmobile happy? And so, I'm sorry, I, I hope you guys don't mind that I'm talking about the library, but it concerns me, and I really want to esteem the Eastside because we really need resources. And I think that we could grow and we could have a nice cohesive, safe area if people would just, you know, respect our needs as well and not just take all the money and put it on the Southwest. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some good news for you.
Really?
Yeah. We have, we have lost our librarian who left to other places, less green pastures. However, we have replaced her with a wonderful person, Andy Apple, who is now our interim librarian. She's a local, has been involved with our library for a very long time, and she is unbelievably qualified, and she works primarily over at the Beale, and I think you can go talk to her anytime you want about your concerns. As far as money, moving money from plastic bags, or pot, or those other things, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I get it.
But it'll have budgetary problems this year, but we're going to manage, like we always do.
And that's what I wanted, this fiscal year, I wanted it on record, let's get that money and keep it in the county. Let's, let's let our citizens grow.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Public presentations. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to board member announcements. Yes, sir.
I don't have an announcement, I just wanted to say something. I was fighting a fever all night last night, so I didn't make it to the morning session, but I missed Mr. Nylon's presentation for his retirement. So, John, I just wanted to tell you, I'm really sorry that I missed that. If I was here, I would have told you how much I appreciate your leadership. The team that you've assembled leaves us in great shape moving forwards for Mr. Alsop. When he takes over, he's going to have a great team around him. You've been a visionary, you've been extremely loyal to the county. I think back how we directed you to go to every library in Kern County and do a workshop, and I don't know, you know, how many hours and hours you put in on that, but you did it without complaining, you did it with a smile on your face. So I just want to tell you how much I appreciate how well-positioned you have left us in your departure. So, thank you, sir.
Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. I'm sure that there were complaints, I think they just didn't go up to the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Nylon, when you were making your rounds around the county, because I know that was lots of time away from your family, lots of time away from leisure, and really appreciate your dedication there. Very important issue, as you heard today, many, many members of the community very passionate about the public library system, so appreciate your investment there. But generally speaking, I've always been taken by your knowledge, your insight, your institutional history with this county. It was very remarkable from day one and always has been. And so, we certainly appreciate that incredible investment of time that you have made over the decades to acquire such knowledge, and, you know, how much it has benefited us through the years to be able to utilize and depend upon such information, such an asset. So, really, thank you. Separately, Chairman, I would like to report that we had a phenomenally successful pajama party last week at my home. Councilman Rivera, as well as Chris Parlier showed up in their pajamas. It was really a big success. Holly Arnold from Mayor Hall's office arrived with 100 pair of pajamas for the children of the homeless shelter, those who we know will spend the holidays in the shelter. So, it was really incredible. Thank you so much. Many, many people who I can't list today, but really, it's a great season to think about others and to give, so I want to say to the community, thank you.
So does the Bakersfield City Council, former and current, do they wear onesies?
One of them had a onesie.
They did not, I'll leave that for your imagination.
No, thanks. Bring us to item number 14, the Public Works Department. Consideration or request for consent to assign franchise agreement 874-2000 and subsequent amendments between Ben Sanitation, Inc. and the County of Kern to U.S. Waste of California and any related requests for extension of time. Ms. Pope.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you just noted, that this item is a continuation of a November 1 item, and it is a request to assign solid waste franchises from Ben Sanitation to U.S. Waste of California. I'm going to briefly go over our discussions back on November 1. Just real quickly, the assignment process, this is only talking about the franchises. It has nothing to do with any of the other businesses the Ben's family has, has nothing to do with propane recycling facility or the porta potty business, nothing else, it's just the franchises. The right of first refusal is in our franchise ordinance and back in 1961 and '71 resolutions for such were included. To my knowledge, to this date, there has been no agreement made, so we're past that point. We voiced concerns regarding U.S. Waste of California, 2016 investigation and accusation by CalRecyclo of recycling fraud. That still has not resolved itself, but it is out there. 2005 SEC fraud settlement. And our biggest concern that the Public Works Department voiced was that by having USA Waste be the franchise holder, our concern was of the LA Waste and the Eastside, and that whole story of the possibility of LA Waste coming up into the Kern County landfills. Your board asked for some additional information at that point, supplemental reports, both with the status of the compliance audits of Ben's operation, and concerns of improper contaminated wood waste chips to private property. With this, I'll turn to Nancy Ewart to give you details on the supplemental reports.
Ms. Ewart.
Good afternoon, Chairman Gleason and member of the board. In accordance with the franchise ordinance and both agreements, the County Auditor's Office may audit Ben Sanitation. The Auditor's Office contracted with HF&amp;H Consultants. HF&amp;H Consultants specializes in the areas of recycling and solid waste management, and for 25 years HF&amp;H has provided expertise, independence, and support to nearly 400 municipal agencies. The audit was conducted by Marva Sheen, CPA. Ms. Sheen has over 25 years of financial and accounting experience as a consultant and controller, and 20 years in the solid waste industry. The audit was initiated on July 7, 2016, and concluded on December 1 of 2016. The scope of the audit focused on specific areas in which the department had received complaints and noted concerns. These areas included invoicing of customers, specifically charging unapproved special fees to customers, the accuracy of tonnage reporting on which gate fees were assessed to Ben Sanitation to be paid to the county, and the accuracy of the certified weigh tickets, from weigh tickets submitted to the department by Ben's and used for reporting to the state of California, and used also to pay the state of California and the landfill operator. The audit found that Ben Sanitation listed special fees at higher rates than those approved by the Board of Supervisors. Ben Sanitation also undercharged certain rates. This is not an issue, as long as the rates are reduced to all customers, it's an issue of fair business practices. The audit found that the reduced rates were not uniformly applied. The audit found that Ben's charged unapproved special fees to customers. As an example, Ben's charged a scale overweight fee to Sun Select. Overweight charges totaled more than $33,000 to Sun Select. To a lesser degree, Ben's also charged extra handling fees. This is particularly troubling, as Ben's was notified in 2010 not to charge unapproved special fees. And in 2013, the department worked with all haulers to develop and establish a limited list of special services. That was approved by your Board of Supervisors. The scale overweight fee was expressly rejected by the haulers at that time. The monthly tonnage reports were found to be mathematically accurate, and that is to be as expected as they were calculated by Excel spreadsheets. However, the origin data, the number of residential carts, and the volume of commercial yardage showed significant inconsistencies and could not be verified. The scale issues, which will be discussed next, could also not be verified. Taken together, the accuracy of customer charges, records, and gate fees assessed could not be verified with any certainty. The department had provided HF&amp;H with certified weigh tickets from Ben Sanitation that did not appear to meet industry standards for completeness or accuracy. The proper application of weigh master rules and regulations is not within the scope of a typical audit. Therefore, the department recommended that the Kern County Department of Agriculture and Measurement Standards review the county records from Ben Sanitation, and provided its findings to HF&amp;H. After review of the county records, the county ag and measurement standards found 448 infraction violations and 33 misdemeanor violations within a five-month period. The county department called in the California Department of Food and Agriculture, Division of Measurement Standards. The county inspectors and state inspectors conducted a joint inspection of the Ben Scalehouse operations. The joint inspection found the following. It found that Ben Sanitation used non-certified weigh tickets to bill customers. It also noted an extreme amount of manually-entered tickets and the inability to demonstrate adequate controls. They further recommended further investigation. So the results of the audit. In summation, the audit found systematic misreporting of customer allocations, considerable inconsistencies in reporting, that Ben Sanitation charged unapproved special service fees, that Ben Sanitation applied rates in a non-uniform basis, and that scale operations and weigh tickets had considerable discrepancies. I will now move on to the issue of the contaminated wood chips. The contamination being discussed is derived from treated wood waste. Treated wood waste is most commonly identified as phone poles, railroad ties, and grape stakes. Treated wood waste is wood commonly used in the ground or water contact applications that have been removed from service. The wood is treated with preserving chemicals that protect the wood from insect attack and fungal decay. Other examples include fence posts, sill plates, pilings, guardrails, and decking. Treated wood waste contains hazardous chemicals that pose a risk to the human health and the environment. Arsenic, chromium, copper, creosote, and pentachlorophenol are among the chemicals added to preserve wood. These chemicals are known to be toxic or carcinogenic. Harmful exposure of these chemicals may result from dermal contact of the treated wood waste or from inhalation or ingestion of the treated wood waste particles from sawdust or from smoke. In the state of California, there are limited options for the disposal of treated wood waste. Treated wood waste may only be disposed in a hazardous wastelandfill, such as McKittrick, or at a composite-lined landfill approved by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, such as Bena, Shafter, or Taft. Many counties have no options for the disposal of treated wood waste, and treated wood waste is typically considerably more expensive to dispose. For a number of years, the Kern County Public Works Department has contracted with Mount Pozo Co-Generation to grind wood waste for use as biomass. It is burned to generate energy. In December of 2015, Mount Pozo Co-Generation ground the wood stockpiles at the Tehachapi landfill. Operationally, the county maintains two stockpiles of wood waste at Tehachapi, one from the general public and one from Ben Sanitation. In August of 2015, the county changed from random load checking at Tehachapi to full-time load checking, and documented Ben's wood waste loads containing treated wood waste. Department load checkers would remove as much of the treated wood waste as possible. Following the December grind, Mount Pozo Co-Generation conducted required testing, and the wood chips from the Ben segregated stockpile were found and confirmed to be contaminated. The department suspended acceptance of wood waste from Ben Sanitation. Following the suspension of the Tehachapi landfill acceptance, in March or April of 2016, wood chips were reported to be disposed of, no, to be deposited on the Ben's Visco-Soccer Field in Tehachapi. Given the concerns at the Tehachapi landfill, Kern County Environmental Health tested the wood chips at Ben's Visco Field. Environmental Health also tested wood chips at 10057 Hamilton Road in Rosamont, a site that was under a notice of violation for cleanup, and that the property owner had informed Environmental Health staff that the mulch had come from Ben Sanitation. The wood chips on both sites were found to contain elevated levels of arsenic, chromium, and lead. The arsenic level in the wood chips at Ben Visco Field were found to be 10 times higher than the arsenic threshold for designated waste. After conferring with Department of Toxic Substance Control, Environmental Health, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, it was determined that the wood chips from all three sites would have to be disposed in a composite-lined landfill approved by the Water Board, such as the Bena landfill. None of the wood chips were supposed to go to Tehachapi, Mojave, Boron, or Ridgecrest. Just as discussed, various public agencies have contributed to the information presented, and they're listed here in this slide, not to mention the independent audit of HF&amp;H Consultants.
In conclusion, we want to bring forward the Ben's guilty felony of 2012, that he already resolved that issue, but what we are seeing is the same practice that got him in trouble prior to 2012 continued after 2012. There's basically a culture of non-compliance. His recycling facility, Tehachapi Recycling Incorporated, their load check program deficiencies, in other words, they just weren't doing the job there. Things were going through on the conveyor belt. Misreporting. He had a considerable amount of evidence that he wrote down, his reporting of where material came from and went to, that we just can't track in any manner whatsoever. The contamination of the wood chips and the mischarging rates, it's just showing, again, a culture of non-compliance. From that, we know we have a need for increased oversight. I mean, we have to do better ourselves. But we do not feel it is in best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare to transfer the assignment of this franchises at this time. Our recommendations, and these come from the regulatory agencies and auditors, is conduct a forensic audit. And a forensic audit to us means just to go in deeper and not just look at the spreadsheets and look at the numbers, but look where the numbers came from, a deeper audit. And we also need to spend more time evaluating the weigh master process and the information that he proposed on it. We can't make heads or tails of much of it. The Department of Public Works recommendation is to rectify, we should rectify and remediate the situation prior to any transfer of franchise. In other words, we recommend to deny requests by Ben Sanitation at this point. At this point, we'd ask for any questions and comments from your board.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Are you done with your presentation, or?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much. Anything before we go to public? Okay, let's open the public hearing, and let's hear what you have to say about it. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to make comment on this issue, now's your time.
Hi, I'm Mark Empy, M-A-R-C-E-M-P-Y. I represent USA Waste. I think you'll notice from the staff presentation that virtually all of the staff report this time is really about Ben's. It's a little counterintuitive to me, that would seem to me that that would be all the more reason that the staff would want to complete a transfer to somebody that they acknowledge is qualified to take over the franchise and manage it. But in any event, I'm not going to address all of the Ben's issues. I'm sure their council will address them, and somebody from Ben's will be up here to address them at length. And I did submit a letter, or rather lengthy, letter about our positions on this matter, which I'm not going to repeat, but I would like to address the issues that were outstanding or still had some questions on it, and move through those quickly and tell you how we think we've resolved those. In connection therewith, I'd like to particularly take a minute to thank County Council Mark Nations, who spent a great deal of his time with us, helping us work through ways that we could satisfy the county and allay their concerns and solve some issues that staff has raised. So, although I thought this was sort of a done deal, let me address the right of first refusal. This has been sort of a whack-a-mole process, as far as I can tell. Everything that was required to be provided to the other haulers pursuant to the ordinance was provided to them. None of them exercised the right of first refusal. They complained that they still didn't have enough information. They were given significantly more information after signing nondisclosure agreements, and then they complained they didn't like the terms of the purchase agreement. Council for Ben's then had several discussions with them, made a number of concessions and changes that might be appropriate, even though they weren't required, and the latest now is, and now they don't like the purchase price. So, we're at the point now where they've been given far more information than anything they're entitled to under the ordinance or the franchise, and it's just one thing after another. So, enough is enough. They've had everything they've had to do, they haven't exercised their right. It's expired under the terms of the ordinance, and this issue should be done. It's a right of first refusal. It's not an open right to get to negotiate a contract that they'd like, the latest being the purchase price. Nothing in the ordinance requires us to allocate it in a particular way, justify that it's a number we want to pay for, and if waste management is willing to pay a certain number because it gives us a bigger footprint in an area where we don't have a big footprint, or if we're willing to do that because it makes sense to us because we have the surrounding higher-density areas, and so we can pay more for that, we're entitled to do that. We don't have to come in and let them endlessly negotiate and decide, "We don't like the price," or "We don't think it was fair." or we don't think it was fair. So I'm hoping that issue has just come to rest. It's, we're long past the time. Nobody's exercised. Let's move on. So another issue that got raised again, which I thought was over, but I do want to briefly address it, and that was Section 1.06 of the purchase agreement. Mr. Manji and Mr. LeBeau, who've been very effective advocates considering they don't have any basis under the ordinance for these positions, have suggested we're going to somehow circumvent the consent of the county because of that provision. So to put a total into that provision, we provided to Mark Nations an amendment to the agreement which specifically provides that nothing in that section will allow us to circumvent any consent that we need from the county on this. So again, I think nail in the coffin and maybe we're beating a dead horse, but I think we should be done with that issue. Even today, the staff has again raised this issue of importation of outside county waste. Problem, of course, is that Kern County borders other counties. I noticed they haven't raised that with respect to any of the other haulers. These other haulers bump up against Kings, San Luis Obispo, San Bernardino, some of them also against LA County. Haven't suggested any of those haulers have any conditions approved on them, that there be any more review of their routes, or that there be put in place, as has been suggested on a couple of times, certain load checking. There's nothing in the franchise agreement about that. There's nothing in the ordinances about that. And you can't assume we're going to breach the agreement and then use that as a basis to condition the assignment. Nevertheless, because we believe that staff honestly felt some concerns in this area, we provided to and negotiated with Mr. Nations an actual amendment to the franchise agreement. That amendment specifically provides that we will not bring LA County waste in here, that we will not cross jurisdictionally route our trucks, we'll park them here. It provides liquidated damages and it even provides for termination of the franchise agreement for breaches. We're willing to do that even though we're not required to do that. But again, that should be an end to that issue. I know everybody's also been concerned about local hiring, and although the practice would be when we take over a new company, that originally everybody who passes our pre-screening tests, drugs, you have to be, have a green card or be a citizen, as long as they pass those tests, they get hired. But we wanted to go a step further. Again, it hasn't been imposed on anybody else in the county, but we went a step further and we agreed with county council that we would amend the franchise agreement to provide for local hiring preferences. So again, the overwhelming issue apparently today for the staff at least has been the sort of bad acts of Ben's. I'm sure they will address those at length, but the important consideration for the board here is that that's not a basis on which to deny the assignment. I would think you would prefer to assign it to somebody else at this point, given the complaints, but that's not a basis. You can't decide that the bad acts of Ben's are a reason not to assign this franchise to USA Waste. If you're really concerned that people who have lived here for some 40 years are going to take $45 million and run off to the Bahamas with it, then there's better ways to handle that issue. You don't have to deny the assignment of the franchise to handle that. So I'll wrap this up for you, but at the last meeting, we had all sorts of discussion and all sorts of arguments from opposing counsel and other people about what basis we could do this on and was there a legitimate basis to not deny the franchise or did we have to deny the franchise or is it legislative or semi-legislative or is it administrative? Was there going to be some supportable way to avoid litigation if you denied the assignment? But it's just the wrong question. The real question here is, is it in the best interests of this county and its ratepayers to agree to the assignment to USA Waste or to continue to force Ben's sanitation to operate this franchise for the next seven and a half years and then look for some way to ding them or terminate the contract? Those are the real questions. It's not just the, is there some basis to say no? You have to look at the result of saying no. Personally, we think this is an easy call at this point. We don't think there's any doubt about our qualifications and we don't think staff has any doubt about those qualifications. So what we respectfully request is that we not continue to kick this down the road. It's supposed to be a 60-day process. We're six months into it. You know, justice delayed is justice denied. We can't go on forever. We can't always kick it down the road. So we'd request that you consent to the assignment today and I'd be happy to take any questions.
We may have some for you as the day moves on. So Mr. Pope, please grab a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I see nobody wants to speak in public, so I will. Does someone want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Please come out. Everybody, now's the time. So others are not hearing me, I'm sorry. If you'd like to speak on this topic, now's the time for you to talk about it and offer your opinion. Because I was just about to close.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I was just waiting for other people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the opportunity to speak on these issues. My name is Paul Benz. I'm a spokesman for Ben's Sanitation. It is a family company. I work for my parents and my sisters and everybody worked there. First of all, I'd like to say to everybody, I know this is a contentious issue, but Merry Christmas, five days away to even my friends at Public Works and Environmental Health and to this board. Some of the issues raised, I agree with Mr. Empy that this is generally more about, you know, a bash Ben's session is the best way I can say it, from Public Works. And it's nothing new to us as it's supposed to be, we've been living for the last five years. It is part of the reason why we have reached this area of assignment. Public Works has actually told us that we need to seek assignment from this board. And when we do, Public Works opposes it, and I don't understand why. But nevertheless, there are several issues that have been brought up and I think need to be addressed. We recently went through an audit that is all of the rave here, and it began in July. We opposed the third party. Public Works chose to audit us, not because of the audit itself. We didn't feel that HF&amp;H could be impartial. We have had recent history with them dealing with contractual issues. And the other part of HF&amp;H is to provide RFPs and RFQs. So I don't believe they had a vested interest in giving us a fair shake. I will say again, though, HF&amp;H was very professional. Ms. Sheehan was very open and we had a very good communication process either by phone or email up until ironically November 1st. We sat here November 1st and Public Works, Mr. Pope, I believe, let this board know that the audit had not been completed because Ben's Sanitation had not been cooperating or given information further to HF&amp;H that they needed to complete the audit. We sent numerous emails, made numerous phone calls, even contacted the Auditor Controller's Office of Kern County, trying to make some contact with HF&amp;H. I can prove this. HF&amp;H never responded to our communication after November 1st. Our communication was basically to HF&amp;H, is there anything that we have not given you that you need to complete this audit? I have the Board of Supervisors asking me why we're not being cooperative and we want to be fully cooperative and open, especially because we knew we'd be back in front of this board December 20th. We had zero communication, even Kern County from the response they got back, the Auditor Controller's Office had not had trouble according to what they told us getting a hold of the auditor. I don't know where that was at, but I do know about a week and a half ago, the audit was complete and I think provided to us on December 9th or 10th. We had three days to issue our comments in response to this audit, which took HF&amp;H four months. And we knew we only had three days because we had to get it, some type of response to your board on the board agenda. So we did our best to offer explanations, point out inaccuracies, or misunderstandings I think the auditor had. And we provided that to the board with a board packet. Two things that glaringly were not in the audit report but somehow made it to the staff report was the accusations that Ben's Sanitation could be underpaying the county $75,000 per month. Now that's glaring. We look at that on the staff report, my eyes even bulged. I asked my staff, I look around, we look at the audit report, nowhere in there does it suggest this in this audit. So we're trying to find out where this accusation blindly came from on the staff report. I think it's sensationalism. I think there's no basis for it. And without getting into too many details because it's kind of long and drawn out, I think it's easily explained. But that's not the purpose of putting that in the staff report. The purpose was to raise your eyebrows about, here we go again with Ben's. We all understand the trouble we had in 2012 and there's a lot of details and politics behind that, but that's 2012. We're sitting here on the verge of 2017 and yet 2012 keeps getting thrown in our face to confuse this issue of assignment. Mr. Empy suggested that if Ben's is so bad and this audit cannot be verified, how much money was spent on this audit and what was the purpose of the audit if we can't even divulge what came out of it? I don't understand that. We have no problem with a further audit. If they want to come and do more of an audit, fine. But at some point, you have to interpret what the audit says and you have to back up some of the accusations and allegations you put out in front of this board and the public. Because it's my opinion that this board's been misled. Nonetheless, some of the specific allegations Ms. Ewart rose was the irregular charging of customers. It is true that one customer in particular is very near and dear to Ms. Ewart's heart and that is the company of Sun Select. Sun Select is a greenhouse farm up in Tehachapi and it's 40, 80 acres, I don't know, very big place, hundreds of employees, 100 at least. We did all the hauling for Sun Select up until September of 15 when we found that Sun Select was using non-franchise haulers to conduct their hauling out of their facilities. I contacted Public Works, Ms. Aurora Rush, and Nancy Ewart regarding the issue. They responded back that, you know, it's not a franchise violation, they're using cold vegetables for farming or whatever, it's no big deal. Okay. Ironically, about that time, Sun Select stopped paying invoices. And when we made collection calls to this company, Sun Select, they claimed that Kern County Public Works, specifically Ms. Ewart, told them not to pay the bills. And that is all hearsay. They did not give me that in writing. I'm just going by what our people were told. The overweight charges that we charged Sun Select were agreed upon by Sun Select personnel. They would fill a 40-yard cubic roll-off box with tomato, vegetables, very heavy material water weight. Trucks almost would not pick it up. When we couldn't do that, when we couldn't pick it up or haul it safely, we asked them to offload it. They did not have the personnel, they did not want to do that, they asked us if we would just haul it as it was. They agreed to pay the overweight charges that we charged them. They paid those overweight charges for a year and a half, having no complaints up until September of 2015. We thought we had an agreement with the customer, we thought we were going the extra mile to keep the customer happy. According to Ms. Ewart, those overweight charges come up to $33,000, I think she's done the math on that. Sun Select currently owes us over $200,000. So I'd be happy if Kern County Public Works would release, you know, the okay to pay Ben's Sanitation the balance. I'd be happy to okay about the 33, or to argue, excuse me, about the $33,000 at a different time. But the amount of overweight charges that we're talking about is very minimal compared to what they owe us. The other issue was the undercharging of customers. Hey, no big deal, the customer gets over and that's a good thing. But the way it's framed to this board is that it's an inconsistent undercharging of customers suggesting some customers are getting a favor, a special rate. Hey, I know Paul, he'll give me a special deal. That's a mischaracterization to this board. In the audit report, if you look and if you read, the undercharging was specifically regarding the Kern County administrative fee, which is $2.40 per year per customer. In essence, that's a franchise fee paid to the county for your county to administrate these franchises. Do you know what Ben's did? Ben's somehow, some way, we did not charge 5,000 of our customers for several years that $2.40. We paid the county every penny of the administrative fee, but what we did is we shot ourselves in the foot and didn't charge the customer for that. So that's an error on our part that we ate. And I'm not looking forward to the time where Public Works directs us to send out bills to our customers for $2.40 when a stamp is, you know, 50, 60 cents now. But that's the basis of the undercharging. It is not, as was presented here, at least how I took it, that this guy gets a special rate but this guy pays full rate. That's not what happened. In regards to the verification of the scale tickets and scale overweight, we've had multiple audits. You know, was the Department of Agriculture and the weights and measures came up? We showed them all of our records. They made some recommendations. They told us that we must do everything on certified weights. I don't know if we build any customers that are not certified weights, that kind of threw me for a loop. But before they left our site, all of their changes that they had requested or ordered were done. And I think the auditor from the State Ways and Measures even notes that in her report. Getting to the wood waste issue, it is true that Kern County has a wood waste agreement with Ben's Sanitation. There's been several of those in the past in order to get into compliance with AB 939. Ben's and Kern County have historically, I'm sure, is like all the other haulers, have worked in conjunction to meet these goals and basically fund recycling. Kern County Public Works suspended our contract to accept our wood waste as they claim Mount Pozo, who they take the wood waste to Co-Generation, claimed that Ben's was contaminating the wood pile. I asked for proof of this. We were eventually given a letter from Mount Pozo that suggested nothing of the sort. It said that the wood waste had contaminants in it. It had never pointed the finger at Ben's. It never suggested that any particular hauler. Keep in mind, Ben's is not the only hauler that goes into the Tehachapi landfill. Lots of public haulers, a lot of independent contractors, and other franchise haulers. Ironically, since Ben's has not been allowed to go in there with the wood waste, Kern County Public Works still has a problem with treated wood waste in their wood material. You don't have to take my word for it, you simply have to look at the local LEA inspection reports every month. So if Ben's is not allowed to bring in wood waste and they were the sole source of contamination of this wood waste, how is it that the county still is in violation with their wood pile? Let's go to the different sites where Ben's is accused of wrongdoing. At the Ben's soccer field, it was reported in the staff report that Ben's just dumped a bunch of wood chips on their soccer fields and spread them where our youth play. Nothing could be further from the fact. It is a 40-acre parcel where these wood chips were placed is, I don't know, 500 yards from the soccer fields, probably 200 yards from the football fields. I provided the clerk at the beginning of this meeting with some information to this board because I didn't have the opportunity to do it prior to this meeting through the staff report or the collection. There was an analysis from soils engineering regarding the test results of those wood chips at the park. And as you will read, there's nothing abnormal or wrong with these wood chips. These wood chips were tested at the highest level, meaning like the residential threshold. You could see that only five out of the 30 samples that were taken had somewhat elevated elements but not enough to be a concern. It is highly unlikely, according to this report, that this would ever reach the groundwater or cause any type of contamination. And when you, if you were to test these at an agricultural zone property or commercial, they don't even reach the levels of concern. And even at the lower level of threshold at residential property, only five of the 30 samples had anything that, you know, was even, let's take a look at that. The wood chips at The wood chips at the soccer field, or I guess on the property where soccer fields are, are no longer there. We've made a conscious effort to remove them, not because we felt we had to, or would be required to. We did that to take it off the issue as an area of concern of this board. We have been waiting and requesting any letter from the local LEA or the La Hontin Water Board regarding why these wood chips are contaminated, or why they need to be removed. The local LEA, from my understanding, from what I've read, has deferred their authority to the La Hontin Water Board. We contacted the La Hontin Water Board, and I hope I'm saying that right, but we contacted them, the lady we talked to said she would need to speak with her manager, and this is about a month, month and a half ago, and that she would get back to us regarding the letter we had requested. Two weeks ago, we made contact with her again, and asked if that letter would be forthcoming, or, you know, could they give us any regulations, or anything we could look at as what we are in violation of. She said that she had talked to her, and this is an email, mind you, she said she had talked to her manager, and that hopefully in three to four weeks, they could get us a letter. We're still waiting for that letter. But nonetheless, rest assured this board, those wood chips are no longer there at the soccer field. We've removed them. I was also surprised to see on the staff report, which of course, we had no ability to, I guess, give an opinion back in written form, was a property in Rosemond, where now we're being blamed for delivering some loads at a piece of property that, according to the pictures, is a landfill in and of itself down in Rosemond. It's the first I've heard of it. We've looked hard and deep in our company to see if anybody knows anything about us delivering anything down there. Now, of course, you know, we have a letter from, I assume, a brother of somebody, so we're hearsay, and we have a letter that eight to 10 years ago, Benz did this. This unknown person that told his brother, knew somebody at Benz, but can't remember who, can't remember why they took it there, can't remember what it was supposed to be used for, but, oh yeah, you know, it came from Benz, sure. And so that's what I'm up here trying to defend. I don't have any relation to that Rosemond property. To my knowledge, we have not delivered anything there, or allowed anything to be delivered there. But what I do know is that this investigation began in June or July of 2015, and it began because there was a shootout at the property, with somebody serving a felony warrant at the Kern County Sheriff, there was a mess down there, somebody was shooting at somebody. And my guess is that the Kern County Environmental Health was called in as a result of, hey, look at the condition of this property. That's 18 months ago. For 18 months, nobody at the county, or anybody for that matter, has questioned Benz, asked Benz, requested for anything from Benz regarding this property, until now conveniently, when we stand up here before you yet again, asking for assignment of the property. We will fully cooperate with the local LEA, with anybody that would like to get to the bottom of this property, but I can tell you now, I don't have any information to give anybody regarding this property. The wood material, according to the pictures, does not even resemble the wood material we generate. Doesn't appear to be the same size, the same material that's used to ground, doesn't seem to be the same consistency, and it's not even the same chemical makeup of what we produce. So I'm supposed to believe that, yeah, it's just our fault. So I'd like to look into that a little bit, because, you know, it has been put out there that we're responsible for it, and the only thing pinning us to that is a letter from the brother of the property owner. So I want this board to understand, if there is anything else to local LEA or environmental health, Mr. Constantine, Mr. Pope would like to look into it, we'll fully cooperate with that. With that, I believe I have concluded my presentation, but as always, I am happy to respond to questions in the future, and I will take a seat unless you have a question now, Mr. Chairman.
I got one. I got one quick one for you. You said you removed the wood chips from the place in Tehachapi, the best facility in Tehachapi?
Yes.
Where'd you put them?
They are back at our MRF.
Okay, thank you. You can grab a seat, and we'll continue with the public hearing and see how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in public?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Garth Stevens, G-A-R-T-H-S-T-E-V-E-N-S, counsel for Ben Sanitation. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak today, and as with last time, since I'm sort of batting cleanup, I'll try my best not to reiterate statements that have been made by Mr. Benz and Mr. Empe. I'll start off very quickly, on the right of first refusal, I think Mr. Empe sort of adequately covered things, but since he attributed a few statements to me, which are correct, I thought you might as well hear it, you know, firsthand, but, you know, there was a great effort made to provide a lot more information, far more than what was required, I would think, almost all of which, what was asked for in terms of substantive information regarding Benz. There were a few times there were requests for certain things, which, there was still some pushback, simply because, you know, it was not relevant to the franchises in question. So for instance, somebody wanted to see a full set of disclosure schedules for the purchase agreement, we said, in response to one particular request, you don't need to see those, they're not, you know, in most cases, they're not relevant to the franchises in question. However, if there's a particular representation in the agreement that references a specific schedule, and you can explain to us why you think you need to see that schedule, we're happy to consider that. But no one was able to do that. We think at the end of the day, it was just more of a fishing expedition. I did have separate communications by email, both with Mr. Mongi, counsel for certain of the rural haulers, and Mr. LeBeau, counsel for the Kern haulers. In each case, you know, there was some back and forth for a while, I think more so with Mr. LeBeau. In both cases, those communications generally ended when I tried to confirm whether or not there was at least agreement on the fact that the right of first refusal offering price was accepted by the offerings of their counsel, and the answer in both cases was either a definitive no, or we're reserving our rights to challenge that. And at that point, where we got to was, well, we'll probably provide this information, but there's really not much point in engaging in in-depth discussions about what the agreements are going to look like, if we don't even have an agreement on something as fundamental as the price. So I know Mr. LeBeau and Mr. Mongi are here, I've seen them, I'm not sure if they're planning to speak today, they can obviously state their positions on that, but in our view, especially taking into account the concerns that the board had at the November 1 meeting, that Benz went well above and beyond what they were required to do, have given plenty more time to the haulers that were interested in exercising the right of refusal, including last week, Benz hosted, put the offer out to all haulers, they could come in, have lunch at the Benz facility, go over more information, ask questions. I think two of the haulers showed up, the rest did not. There's really nothing more Benz can do in that regard. Again, they've more than met their obligations. No one's exercised the right of first refusal. Hopefully, that at least as an issue, as part of this assignment, is no longer an issue. The wood chips issue, I don't have a lot to say on that, I think Paul Benz just spoke, you know, well on that, but, yeah, I think it is important to point out that the only allegation made was in a letter conveniently delivered last week, in advance of this meeting. It's a hearsay statement attributed to an individual by the name of Jose Masias. I don't know who Jose, I'm sorry, Jesus Masias is, he didn't make the statement. I'm not aware of any follow-up with him, I don't know if he's physically around, if he's dead, alive, maybe he's in jail in connection with that whole shootout that occurred. But the bottom line is, you have this allegation made by one person attributing statements made to another person 10 years ago, with, at least for the moment, no way to validate that. I think what's particularly interesting, considering how much the Department of Public Works have been on Benz over the last year, on anything they could find, you know, real or imagined, that according to what was provided in the staff report, that first statement where Benz was, you know, alleged to be the party that deposited that waste, or, excuse me, the wood chips, was in October 2015, at least that was the written letter. That's a year ago, that's more than a year ago. At no point did anybody from the county contact Benz, saying, what's this all about? A year. Now, at a time when the Department of Public Works is doing everything they possibly can to throw as much shade on Benz and on this process as they can, now suddenly, this is an issue. And I think, you know, it begs the question, why is this only an issue now? I can only speculate, I think my view is, they probably recognize that it's a very weak claim, that's likely baseless and probably unsupportable, but nonetheless, it's out there now. On the audit, I think, hopefully, all of you received the letter that I had written with Paul Benz's specific sort of rebuttals to certain points in the audit. I'm not going to get into them all now, obviously, though, that, including as stated by Mr. Benz today, there are numerous concerns about the audit. This is not about just saying it's all wrong, we disagree with everything, it's about pointing out that there were a number of statements and conclusions made in that audit that we feel are incorrect, and more importantly, could have been avoided, or at least correctly stated, had the audit firm been able to continue communicating with Benz. They could have asked some simple questions, can you explain this? And they didn't. And I don't know why they didn't, but we end up with a very negative audit report that didn't have to be that way. I do want to point one substantive thing that I thought Mr. Benz was going to speak to, and he'll be able to speak to this better than me, so if need be, you may need to call him back up for this, but on this question of this $75,000 potential, $75,000 a month, which again, was not in the audit report, that was a conclusion that was reached by the county, and put in the staff report. The best that Benz could come up with is that there was a lack of attention paid to the fact that a certain amount of the waste that was accounted for in Benz's internal records was taken to landfills outside Kern County. And if you took a look at that waste, coupled with the waste that did go to the Kern landfills, those numbers would line up a lot more, and there wouldn't be this big sort of missing link. And that's an example of something that, had the auditor asked the question of Benz, and can you explain this discrepancy, we think very likely could have been resolved. Again, on that point, if you want to have Mr. Benz come up and speak more to that in detail, you know, I encourage you to do so. But look, at the end of the day, the staff report has said, we think there ought to be a forensic audit for this and other reasons, things pointed out. Benz is fine with that, Benz doesn't dispute that, in fact, Benz would kind of like to clear its name on a lot of this stuff, so they think, yeah, by all means, please do have a forensic audit, or any other audit, you know, or further thing that the county needs to do, and Benz will cooperate fully, just as they cooperated fully with the current audit. The concern then, and I think where a lot of this stuff we've been talking about today comes around to, is I think there is this concern, and it was raised at the last board meeting, I think in particular by Supervisor Maggert, that at some point through this process, it's going to be discovered that Benz owes some amount of money to the county, and that if Benz is allowed to complete its sale, whether it's to Waste Management or any other party, that the company's going to liquidate, Paul and Joan Benz are going to take their big sack of money, and they're going to run off into the night, and the county's going to have no recourse to collect anything that they're actually entitled to. Mr. Pope recently, I think it was quoted, I think it was on Friday, in Bakersfield newspaper, making some statements to this effect. His quotes are, if the audit findings are accurate, he said, a sale would let Benz off the hook. That's completely untrue. His next quote, the reasons we're bringing these concerns forward is that upon the sale, Benz is gone. Also completely untrue. Once the company is dissolved, the concerns about billing problems and suspicious record-keeping evaporate. Completely untrue. Now, you know, these statements, and any concerns, by the way, on the part of any supervisor, that this is what could happen, you know, have no foundation, I'll try and explain a little bit without getting, you know, too lawyerly, but to me, they just either represent a fundamental misunderstanding of how things work with corporations and their shareholders, and the associated liabilities. Or, I think in this case, because I don't think Mr. Pope's an ignorant person, was sort of a deliberate attempt to throw some shade over this. Now, I think as most people know, corporations are what are called limited liability entities, which means their shareholders are not personally liable for the corporation's obligations. There are certain exceptions in certain cases, but generally, that is the rule. Which means that Ben Sanitation itself, to the extent it has any liabilities, now or in the future, is responsible for those liabilities, not its shareholders. If Benz were to be liquidated following a sale to Waste, meaning they dissolve the company, paid off a few creditors, distributed the cash up to Paul and Joan Benz, who are the company's only shareholders, what that happens, under law then, is Paul and Joan Benz have just become personally liable for the unsatisfied obligations of Ben Sanitation. That would be an incredibly foolish thing for them to do. Needless to say, that's not going to happen. They're not going to dissolve Ben Sanitation a day, a week, a month, whatever, after Waste. In fact, even before these issues came up, I explained to them that even in connection with the USA Waste sale, they would want to keep that company in place for some time to make sure that, to the extent there are any claims arising out of that sale, that they're not personally involved. But let's suppose, even then, they ignored my advice, they ignored common sense, and they went ahead and did that. And a week after the sale, they dissolved Ben Sanitation, they distributed up tens of millions of dollars of net after-tax proceeds from the sale, plus whatever other cash the company has, and they skipped town. Paul and Joan Benz have been members of this community for over 40 years. Three of their four kids live in this community, they have many grandchildren in this community. They own a number of pieces of real property, including property that will not be sold to USA Waste, and that includes their headquarters facility on Goodrick Drive in Tehachapi. They're going to become landlords of USA Waste. So there is plenty that's tying them to this community, community ties, family ties, tangible property ties. And these concerns that, well, what if, what if they did this? We can't let them sell until we're satisfied that that can't happen, is just, it's not a reasonable concern, especially when you look at the facts. And I want to just read a quote partly to you. There was a question made at the last hearing, when Teresa Goldner was still county council here, and the question was asked about, in connection with whether the board could postpone decision-making pending the audit. And part of her response, I have her full response, but part of her response was, your board's responsibility is to make a decision based on credible, sufficient evidence, based on factors that bear a real or substantial relationship to the health, safety, or welfare of the county. And I want to emphasize credible, sufficient evidence. Now, if there's concern about the existing audit allegations made, fair enough, credible, sufficient evidence, the board certainly has the right, I would say, and something like that, to say, we need more information, we need a further audit. But to speculate, some dark hypothetical about the Benz is skipping town with proceeds, where there's no evidence of that, not even, you know, forget sufficient, forget credible, no evidence, to deny or suspend a decision on approving the assignment of the franchise just based on that, would be an arbitrary decision. And as we've discussed before, and I think as there was consultation between Ms. Goldner and board supervisors at the last hearing, the franchise agreement specifically says that consent to the transfer of the franchises cannot be arbitrarily withheld or delayed. So I'm just making the point that delaying or denying approval of the transfer, based on this fear that Benz won't be around to pay its debt if anything that's owed to the county, is unfounded, and would be an arbitrary breach, or, I'm sorry, an arbitrary decision which would be in breach of the franchise agreement. So I'm not sure what else I can kind of say on that, other than, I did have some very initial discussions with Mark Nation, who I agree with. Mr. Empe has been very cooperative and helpful in this process. I can't convince the board members that Benz will be around, will be solvent, will be more than well-capitalized to satisfy any obligations due to the county. You know, there is the idea that, of having some kind of an escrow, it would have to be a reasonable escrow, out of the proceeds of sale. I don't think, you know, again, keeping in mind that Benz does have plenty of assets that aren't going anywhere, I don't think it would need to be viewed by the county as the sole source of recourse, and therefore, needs to be some huge sum, but I think if it would give the board greater comfort, that there's an actual source of funds they could look to, that's something that Benz is willing to consider. I think the key consideration would be, what's the amount, and what's the time period? If, for instance, the county needs three, four, you know, five, even six months to complete a forensic audit, deliver a report, that's fine, but it can't be an open-ended process. This suggestion from Department of Public Works staff, that we need to keep Benz where they are, until we can complete a, rectify and remediate the situation, I don't know what that means, I don't know how long that would take. I think everyone's going to have a different opinion as to what that constitutes, I don't know what the cost of that would be, whether those things are even reasonable, I just don't see that's a way that you can actually keep this deal hostage for that long. So... So we're more than willing to work with the county on this. I think we've had a good working relationship with Mr. Nations, but I think the concern would be, you know, what is something that the board could get comfortable with, assuming all other issues can be resolved? And, you know, could we get something done quickly, relatively quickly at least? So thank you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. We may have some questions. Grab a seat.
Thank you.
Richard Monji, on behalf of the rural haulers. And remembering that it's very dark up here, I have virtually no notes, so it'll be pretty brief, because I can't read anything up here. We weren't really going to speak, but there was a couple of comments made by council for the two parties that did speak, and we just felt we can't leave them out there with the idea that they're true when they're not. One of the comments was that there was communications between council for the hauler side and council for Benz, and those regarding exchanging of information to deal with this right of first refusal. And those broke off because the hauler side wouldn't say that they would pay 14 million or whatever the price was. What happened, I can't speak for the Zone Two side, but I can tell you what happened from the rural hauler side. We got a draft of an agreement, I promptly provided comments on it, and the sticking point was that the Benz side wanted to give us certain information, and that's it. You can't ask any questions. You could look at that information, and maybe you have questions, as the county's now experiencing, you can't ask any questions. You have to make your decision. And if you decide not to buy, in addition to not buying, you have to tell the county that you don't oppose the transfer, even though in your heart, as a resident of this county, you don't believe it's in the best interest of the county to approve the transfer. You have to agree that you will tell the board that you won't oppose. So our rural haulers were not prepared to throw the county under the bus for the opportunity to get some information that might be incomplete to benefit their own pockets. So that's what happened on the Benz side. On the Waste Management side, in their comments, I thought they said something very interesting, because it was actually accurate. So the real question is, is it in the best interest of the health, safety, and general welfare of the county to approve this transfer? But if you listen to their discussion, they flip that proof issue apart, around. They try to make it sound like, well, is there any information that would cause you not to? And if you don't have enough, you have to approve, rather than, is there any, is there sufficient evidence to cause you to believe and make the necessary finding that the transfer is in the best interest? And then flipping back to the Benz side, even though you now have this issue from your own auditor and your own staff and your weights and measures and the state, where in a normal business transaction, you say, well, wait, I'm not going to hand you the money, and then we'll settle out these issues later. You would say, no, we're going to settle out these issues, we're going to investigate, I'm going to know what I'm buying, we're going to get this resolved now, not trust me later. Because the best point to make your negotiation and get your resolution and correct your problems is before you've turned over the money. So from the county's standpoint, I would disagree with council for Benz, not surprisingly, that the county's best leverage point is with the Benz company if they think there's something wrong, is now. Really has nothing to do with the rural haulers. That's your issue, but I just point that out. Going back to Waste Management, though, and is it in the best interest of the county to transfer to them? They keep talking about they're competent and able to do the job, and I don't think anybody questions they're a big company and can do something. But what's the job? Look what they've done here. And I'll just give you a couple of examples, and then you decide, is that who I want to transfer a franchise to that I don't have to transfer to unless it's in the county's best interest? Example one, they want to be, say they're going to come into the county and be good leaders. If you look at the first paragraph of Mr. Benz, excuse me, Empy's December 14, 2016 letter, he's accused the county staff of just, of trying to do his job, which is just trying to do its job, of, and I can't remember his exact words, but he basically says openly hostile, that's what his words are, openly hostile, which means, you're not giving me what I want. I'm going to be a big leader of this county. I'm, you're not giving me what I want, I haven't even gotten here, and because you won't give me what I want, my accusation is you're openly hostile. They haven't even gotten into the town yet. If you look at the second page, they've said, not only is the county liable for various actions that were apparently taken in the course of the county's due diligence of this transfer, they're saying the staff has personal liability. So people now trying to do their job are now getting threatened with personal liability. So that's the people that want you to transfer the franchise to them. And I'll give you another example. I thought this was a dead issue, but Mr. Empy brought it up. And it goes to credibility, and it goes to integrity. You recall at one of my last presentations, or the only other presentation on this, I pointed out that the Benz Waste Management Agreement had a Section 106 that said, if by the time of the closing date, there has not been approval of any transfer of necessary contracts and permits, the Benz company will operate its business as if essentially it's owned by Waste Management. Waste Management gets all the money. It'll be just like the transfer and the sale had occurred, and just like there'd been an approval, even though there hasn't. And that's what they contracted and agreed to do. And we pointed that out, and the first response you got from Mr. Empy is that Mr. LeBeau, who's a longtime practitioner in this county, represents some very substantial and prominent businesses, and I think I do the same, but I'll give him higher rank than me, because I think he deserves it. We didn't understand the agreement. That that language was just intended to deal with little things like, oh, you don't have the copier agreement assignment. Well, if you look at Section 106, they use two defined terms, assigned permits and assigned contracts. When you look at the agreement, assigned permits means franchise agreements. It wasn't an accident. What I reported to you was their actual intent. They got up and told you that's, no, it was something else. Now they have modified the agreement because they realize they're caught. But they come up here instead of realizing, hey, we made a mistake, that's wrong, they try to tell you a story. And again, this is with a company that you have the other evidence of a long history, which I think the reference was made to, I think it was Benz Council, talking about the accusation of Benz having a long history of some sort of violations or conduct. Well, you have the same thing with Waste Management. So when you see that long history, then you see this same type of conduct, and they're not even doing business in here, why does that give the county the feeling that it's in the best interest of the county to transfer? And I'll make one final comment, talk a little longer than I intended. Last time, I heard Mr. Empy talk about some ethics award that Waste Management had gotten, and had gotten every year for a number of years, and I couldn't catch the name of the company, so I couldn't really research it. But he put it in his letter this time. The company's called Ethosphere. So Waste Management is telling you, we get an award from Ethosphere for 11 years in a row, that we're one of the most ethical companies around. If you look up Ethosphere, it was a company created by one person, they put on seminars in ethics, they have a magazine in ethics. You, if you're a company, can sponsor a seminar, you can take out an ad. And if we give you the ethics award, you just pay us a $10,000 a year licensing fee so that you can say you're one of the most ethical companies. So in my line of business, I can say a not very polite word for what that would be if I was giving a judge money for, and then asking for him to give me an award. So that's what Ethosphere does. And the final point on Ethosphere, which is just so fascinating, in 2011, one of the years that Waste Management claims they got the Ethosphere Award for Most Ethical Companies, one of their divisions paid a $7.5 million, which is small for their fines, fine for environmental violations. So apparently, to Ethosphere, you can pay a $7.5 million fine, have SEC violations, pay $350 million in a class action suit, and right now have a unresolved claim by Cal Recycle, and still be one of the most ethical companies in the year, company, countries, companies in the country. That is not giving me a warm and fuzzy feeling about Waste Management. So with that, I just ask you to consider that. And that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, the public hearing is closed, bring back the board for a common consideration. Unless, Mr. Pope, you'd like to start off, your name was brought up a couple times. Would you like to review some comments made earlier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would. First, I'd like to turn to Ms. Zewort to talk about the wood chip issue briefly.
Paul Benz Jr. provided you with some information from Soils Engineering Incorporated regarding the testing of the wood chips on the Benz Visco soccer field. And the SEI report indicated that the material is not hazardous. We concur, it is not hazardous, but there is a wide range between something that is totally benign and something that is hazardous. So when we first looked at the wood chips at the Tehachapi landfill, our first impression was, we did this dry testing, that is an industry standard, and the test results came up high, but not really high. So we actually looked at what was called the human exposure-based screening numbers provided by the EPA. We asked, can we leave these, they can't be burned, but can we at least use them on-site? Can we use them for land application or something like that? Unfortunately, they exceeded both the residential and the commercial standard to be left on-site. So then what we did was we contacted the water board, and the water board indicated that, yes, your dry testing is appropriate, but because of the groundwater issues, this is really a leachability issue, we have to do what's called a wet test. So we did do that wet test. And we were surprised to see, because usually, you don't have a huge amount of leachability. Unfortunately, with these wood chips, we had a lot of leachability. Specifically arsenic was five times higher than the arsenic, barium was at least three times higher, chromium was, for instance, .07, they're up at .58, very, very, very high, seven times that standard. When it came to the wood chips at Benz Visco's field, they failed the dry test right out, right out of the bag. So we didn't even go to a wet test standard. But the SEI testing that was done confirms the testing that we, that Environmental Health did on Benz Visco Field. It came up with 54 parts per million, I saw it writing here, and that basically confirms it. The problem is, we're held to a designated waste standard. We can't take anything above the designated waste standard into our landfills. And in the case of arsenic, it's about 10 times higher than the designated waste standard. Lead is twice as high. Chromium, that's one of the ones they state, we got the exact same number they did, 54 parts per million, and the standard for designated weight is, waste is 14.34. So in every single case, I could actually put this up on the screen if you'd like to see it, but there's a whole, of all the different constituents tested at the soccer field, it looks like about 15 or 20, only four, only four did not, would have been below the standard. All the other ones were above the standard, and they were significantly above the standard. So I just wanted to place a clarification for your board on that.
Mr. Chairman, we have considerable amount more evidence, it just depends on how you want to get, how deep into the weeds you want to get into this hearing. We have stuff that just shows that the business that he did in 2012 continued on through until about August, September of this year, when we really started getting involved in it. It is detailed, it is tough to understand, that's why we did not bring it forward in this forum, but we'd be glad to share it with you if you had any interest in looking at it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I want to follow up with Mr. Pope on what he just said. Specifically, what I'm curious about is the statement made by the representatives from Benz that discussed the staff reports, the staff reports, discussion of approximately $75,000 a year, I'm sorry, $75,000 a month, that had, that the county had been underpaid for approximately five years, I believe, that was what was in the staff report. And specifically, the fact that the audit doesn't mention that. And so I, what I'm assuming is that that's what you're alluding to, that you have more information that you can provide to explain that claim in the staff report, that estimate that you've come up with. And so I don't, I agree, you know, we've already been at this for a while, but I think that if you could give us some general information that explains that concern from staff, because that, basically, that's, those are dollars that taxpayers and ratepayers in Kern County should be very concerned about. And so I'd appreciate an explanation from you, at least in general terms, about how you arrived at that number.
Through the chair to Supervisor Scrivener. Yes, the taxpayers should be concerned here. The mechanism by which the haulers pay back to the county fees for the land use, or the, actually, the disposal fee of commercial waste, is they collect the fee from their customers, and then they supply a number back to us that says how much they collected, and then they pay us based on that. All the other landfills, we have independent scales checking this. Tehachapi landfill, we did not. From May of 2012 to July of 2016, the numbers in the reports were identical every month. In other words, he just copied the previous month's report. How, and this is a pay quantity to the county of Kern. When we got to the August, September of this year, when we started to question this in detail, the numbers radically changed. So for better than four years, they were identical. They weren't just made up. We can get into it and look at it, we are, what we're doing now is installing a scale for the county, so we'll have real numbers. Up until then, they weren't. We cannot, our concern is, the audit that was done, looked at that spreadsheet, the numbers work on the spreadsheet, but how the numbers got to the spreadsheet is the question mark. We do not, there's no way it could be the same number of tons every single month for four years. You can't even duplicate it in one month to the next. Can't be done. That is a type of thing that shows, we did a rough calculation to see what, compared to what we think is actual numbers today, comparing it to what he reported all those years, it's about the $75,000 a month.
So would you then, if we continued to analyze the numbers from here on, you said you started looking in August through September 2016, and so as we look at October... you said you started looking in August through September 2016, and so as we look at October, November, December, and as we, as we would continue, continue to analyze the tonnage reports, since we do now have scales in place at Tehachapi, you think you would be able to extrapolate from the new information what, what the, what the numbers should have been during that four-year period of time before we had it? And is that how you arrived at the $75,000?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, the, I think the attorney for, for both Waste Management and Benz suggested that if, you know, if Benz had been, um, had been doing what is alleged, you know, you, we would be better off just to assign it to a new player, um, in Waste Management. And so why do you disagree with that recommendation from them? And I'd also like Mark Nations to, um, to contribute something to that as well in regards to the law and the corporate umbrella protections, et cetera. So first you, and then, and then, Mr. Nations, it would be specifically in regards to what Mr. Stevens was saying with, with respect to corporate structure and LLCs.
Through the Chair to Supervisor Scrivener. We feel we have enough information, enough checks and balances, enough awareness of what is going on, that we can get real numbers. And we feel it's a time for us to have real numbers from Paul Benz. This is how we'll build a track record of how much is truly being done, and then we'll be able to compare that to past records. That is why we think it is, it's before we consider assignment to anybody else, we need to continue on the path we are on with us doing our job to provide you with the information of what we can produce.
Okay, so just, I'm going to try to, to say that another way. You, if, if we agreed to the assignment to Waste Management, presumably the numbers reported would, would be different, would change with them. Well, actually, I'm sorry, I'm on cold medicine, so I'm trying to, trying to have coherent thought here, but if we don't, if we don't continue to analyze Benz's operations over the course of the next several months, it would be difficult for us to then determine what the reporting should have been for the past four years.
That's our belief.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Ewer, can you, there was some discussion of the Sun Select, the overweight, the overweight charging per Sun Select. First of all, we don't allow overweight charges. For one reason is the impact on our road infrastructure. But there was, there was something said about that, I believe, by Mr. Benz. And so could you, since it was brought up, could you explain to us what the situation was and what the department has tried to do to rectify that and what, and if that, if that complaint from Sun Select led us to start analyzing other accounts?
Supervisor Scrivener, through the Chair. What exactly happened was Sun Select, in looking at their invoices, was seeing a huge increase in what was a scale overweight charge. And they came to the county and said, is this a legitimate charge? Is this a special fee that can be charged? We looked at our list and said, no, it is not. And it was amounting up to at least 9% of their bill on a monthly basis. So when we took a look at it and we brought it to Benz's attention, they first of all said it was, it was because it was agreed to by the foreman at the site. The, the company looked back and said, there was no such agreement. So Sun Select had actually gotten to the point where, I mean, this was a major client of, of Benz Sanitation. Their bills were hundred, a thousand, $100,000 a month bills. And so what Sun Select basically did was they said, we're getting abused, and Benz Sanitation, uh, basically has denied, denied this and said, you know, they had approval, which they did not. They're required to have it in writing. So what Sun Select chose to do, which is their entitlement to do, they bought their own roll-off truck and operated it with their own staff. That is entirely allowed within this county. The staff person that they hired had worked for a J. Torres Trucking, and Benz Sanitation sent us pictures and all sorts of different things claiming that this was a violation of the franchise. And we investigated every single one of those accusations. We contacted, we verified that the employee was a full employee on the payroll for Sun Select, that they had purchased and, and bought their own roll-off truck and their own roll-off bins, that the material that they were taking, or they had been taking it to Benz Sanitation for recycling, they now had a different market. They could take it, um, down to the Pettit feedlot right at the base of Bena, and the off-spec peppers and tomatoes was used as animal feed. No money changed hands, and therefore it was no longer considered waste, and it was a very legitimate operation. But we went through and double-checked every single accusation and claim from Benz Sanitation and found that it did not support any violation of the franchise, and that Sun Select was entirely legitimate in what they chose to do.
Thank you, Ms. Ewer. Mr. Nations, do you have anything to add as far as the, the question I asked regarding the, the corporate structure and if, if we allowed for the, for the transfer, how that may, that may impact our, our ability to, I don't know, seek damages or, or whatever? You know, Mr. Pope, he, he explained why he thinks it's important for us to continue to look at the tonnage reports for Benz going forward for a period of time. But do you have any, any comments in response to Mr. Stevens? And if you don't, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Stevens' summary of the effect of forming a corporation and its impact on potential liability of the shareholders is accurate. Certainly, people form corporations to protect themselves from personal liability. If they were dissolved that corporate structure, they would become personally liable themselves. So the risks he identified are real and accurate.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Scrivener. I got a couple of questions for you. First, I want to open my comments with the thought that WMI is in Kern County. They operate in Ridgecrest, and to my knowledge, they do outstanding work. So my questions and my thoughts, personally, I have no disregard for WMI as a player. I want to talk about a couple of things. First, you said that since 2012 till 2016, you looked at their report, monthly reports, and you found that the numbers were identical every month. Correct?
That's correct.
And then you looked at the numbers recently, because you, you notified them that they're not being report, accurately reported, and you're seeing significant difference in the numbers that are reported recently than those numbers that had been reported for four years.
I'll turn to Ms. Ewer for a more detailed explanation.
Okay, but let me finish my question. So based on the difference in the numbers that they've been reporting recently compared to what they did report for four years, your estimate, you come up with this estimate of $75,000 a month possible damages that they have under-reported to us. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's more complicated than that, but that's the gist of it.
Yeah, I was, Mike, I have a couple of questions. First one, why didn't we catch this before? Why didn't we catch this four years ago?
Supervisor Gleason, we've been receiving these reports since 2001. We have not had the ability to verify the numbers in the past. When HFH looked at the audit, we provided them with the report, and we started hand-entering and tracking all of the numbers over time. And so we started to see that there was long periods of time where no numbers changed, and then all of a sudden, numbers would increase greatly. I, I can refer you to, for instance, from December 2008 to January 2009, um, the, I want to make sure I have my heading proper here, but I believe it is the residential cubic yards that are picked up in Benz went from 1,928 within the county unincorporated area to 9,344 in one month. We saw that for City of Tehachapi, went from 411 cubic yards per month to 1,272. The commercial Benz in the county went from 3,697 to 11,573. So those were the types of huge jumps and inconsistencies that HFH first looked at and said, these numbers don't make any sense. We need to go back. You need to dig deeper. You need to verify why these numbers changed so radically, and then didn't change for the next two years. So what Mr. Pope referred to was actually from May 11, May 2011 to current, the numbers didn't change. What did change was that the Board of Supervisors provided notice to Benz Sanitation that the Tehachapi recycling contract would be terminated August 31st. The month of September was the very first month we could look at numbers strictly for Tehachapi alone. They could no longer be merged. And one of the things that we have found that is key to how Benz Sanitation pays the county is that it's always on these numbers that are based on about 60% residential and 40% commercial. What showed up with Tehachapi for the first time, and this is what happened when Waste Management took over in Ridgecrest, all of a sudden, the numbers couldn't be combined in such a ways that you couldn't make sense of them. All of a sudden, it showed that about 27%, not 60% of the waste stream was residential, which meant Benz Sanitation should have been paying a much higher amount of gate fees to the county. So that one month alone showed that about $76,000 was shorted to the county. Going back over time, I think the month of August would have been about $60,000. When we look at it, $75,000 is probably somewhat conservative. It could be anywhere, when HFH first looked at this, they said their range would be about $50,000 to $150,000. But we wanted to give a number that we felt that was conservative, that we could actually look at and calculate as of our September. But we didn't get these numbers until well into October, because that's when they report their, their September numbers. What we have seen when, in looking at the trends, is that there was a disproportionate amount applied to the residential sector as opposed to the commercial sector, because our residential sector is the land use fee and comes in free of charge. It's not charged at the gate. The other thing we see is a disproportionate amount shifted to multifamily dwellings. So this was information that we couldn't make sense of until we got this September report and look at it and say, what are these numbers telling us? But it's based on these numbers that were, that HFH looked at, and then we looked at and said, we got a problem here.
Is there, do we have any way of going back over the years and doing a deeper analysis of the numbers that are reported to find out exactly what those discrepancies are?
We do. We have the numbers presented in the report back to 2001. I believe, however, that Benz Sanitation is required to keep their weight records and customer records back at least four to five years. So conceivably, four to five years is the furthest that we could go back, just from a record-keeping perspective. Way tickets, however, they're expected to keep, I believe indefinitely by the state.
Okay.
So there's, there's a number of different places that we can look to try to rectify and reconcile these numbers.
Thank you. I, I strongly suspect from what I'm hearing that the, the audit that you're going to do, or we hopefully are going to do, and find out, we're going to find that this is a mess, not only from a numbers perspective, but also from an operational perspective in terms of where they dump waste, what standard that waste is or is not, and how they manage their operations. I strongly suspect from what I've heard today and the reports I've read, that it's a mess. And I'm deeply concerned about the value of that mess to the county, and I'm deeply concerned about the, the welfare. People brought up the welfare, health, and concern of Kern County is my primary interest in what decision I make based on that criteria. I think that my leverage as a, our, our leverage is greatest now while Benz is there. I think that our greatest leverage is going to occur after completion of a thorough analysis or audit that's going to enable us to determine the exact extent of the damage that's been caused by the poor operations or the poor fiscal management of that company. And I'm very interested in exacting, uh, the, exactly what we need to do to ensure and protect the citizens of this county, and that's what my decision is going to be based on. And I don't, I'm not sure whether we can allow this transfer to happen and still achieve that, that goal of mine. Does anybody, can anybody answer that question, Mr. Nations? Can you answer that question?
It all comes down to the number. You can condition the transfer on, for example, Benz being required to deposit a certain sum of money in an account that would cover those types of...
Mr. Nations, can I interrupt you for a quick second?
Sure.
How are we possibly to know the extent of that damage when we have the wet leaching you were talking about from the arsenic levels? We, you know, we just found one place where that's happened. There could be dozens, as far as we know.
Right.
You know, how are we supposed to come up with a number to determine the value of that damage, possible damage?
I have not heard enough today to give you any advice on that. I don't know how you would come up with one.
Thank you. I, I have serious concerns about this transfer, not because of the quality of company of WMI. I trust that they're a quality company, but I don't trust the quality company of Benz. And I'm very much interested in maintaining as much leverage as I can to ensure they are responsible for cleaning up their mess and properly accounted for their finances. And that's what my vote's going to go.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I can't help but feel that this case needs a extended jury trial to work out the facts and the conflicts, the allegations, one way or the other. This is very complicated, very complicated. Sifting through, he said, she said, what is accurate and what is not is, uh, this is a lot of work. And, and I know that no one who is communicating this issue right now is happy about it. It is a particularly difficult and complicated matter that is dividing, you know, really good people in a community, and I'm sorry for that. But I am very curious to know how, Mr. Scrivener, you would like to proceed, given that you have a very important input on this matter, because I'm inclined to follow your lead. But it does appear as though a more in-depth analysis of these facts is necessary before we move forward. I, I can't imagine not having that and making these kind of decisions that have implications on this county in perpetuity. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm not sure what, what a, what a more extensive audit is going to, is going to provide as far as information on this, but what I, what I am concerned about is making sure that we are doing our due diligence as a board. There, I'm, I'm sure that there are explanations for some of the concerns that staff has, has brought up. However, the, the discrepancies in the tonnage reported for four years, and then what happens once we put in independent weight scales, I think that is some disconcerting information. And in order to ensure that we are doing everything we can to protect the integrity of our, of our system and the, the cost ultimately to the ratepayers and the taxpayers, I think that a more extensive audit is, is warranted. I'd like to know what staff's recommendation is specifically, as far as, as far as a, as far as a more extensive audit is concerned, and, and then we'll talk about the assignment after that.
Through the Chair to Supervisor Scrivener. I think the important thing to us is to have Benz Corporation continue doing their job, and we will then continue to start, or to work with them in identifying and fleshing out all these issues. We will probably need a... We will probably need additional help doing that. We may be able to do a lot of ourselves, but I think a third party would be a better answer to get into it and identify all that we have going. This type of thing would probably take six to nine months to do. We believe that it is essential, just so you will have the information you need to make a decision to move ahead one way or another.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation at this time, or have you identified a firm that would do the audit? Or is this something you're going to have to come back to the board for approval? Is this an RFP process?
Through the chair, we'd probably be working with the auditor's office, Mary Bedard, to try and identify somebody. They handled the last audit. I would prefer that they do the same again this time. But we'd like to work with them to identify this, not just a check of the numbers that are there, but to explain how the numbers got there. So whatever the depth of audit that is.
Okay. And then in addition to that, have we confirmed that the woodships have been removed from the Ben's Visco soccer fields?
That was news to me.
Okay. So we, so then you will be confirming that. Is that a, is that public health arena versus...
Environmental health.
I'm sorry, environmental health versus Public Works?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then also, it, we also have the site in Rosamond that we need to determine how that's going to be cleaned up.
Yeah, we will get more information on exactly that. Right now, we have the testimony of one of the people that claims some relationship to it. We'll have to get more, apparently.
Okay. All right. So I will move staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
That brings us to number 24. Change order number two for AB 1900 Kern County Justice Facility Project in the amount of $1,677,000 for a new total not to exceed $101,553,554. Mr. Frappel.
Before you, at this time is a request for approval of change order number two with Balfour Beatty Construction LLC in connection with the construction of the Kern County Justice Facility, the expansion of the Laredo facility. And in, as we've identified in your board letter, this is a kind of a change order that is a culmination of approximately 58 kind of individual line items that roll up into a cost of $1,677,000. If you categorize these, or these items really categorized into three groups, they are generally related either to the increase in staff and facility efficiencies. Secondly, the increase in safety and security for staff and inmates. And probably the third largest category is changes that are required in order for the county to comply and address state regulatory requirements. So those, all those 58 items kind of fall into those three categories. These are items that the county has reached consensus with the contractor on. They're not in dispute. They have been vetted through the county's other outside project management firm, Kitchell, and the county's outside attorneys. So this, these have been vetted through county staff, both from construction services, the sheriff's department, as well as our outside experts. So at this time, be happy to answer any questions and go. Apparently, we didn't vet with everybody.
I want pepperoni. Pepperoni? Yeah, large. No anchovies. So I'd be happy to go through any of those. In your board package is kind of detailed information on the change order and certainly prepared to answer any questions your board might have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Let's open this for public. Any thoughts for the public? Anybody wishing to make comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved. All eyes.
Takes us to item number 30. Proposed organizational restructure of the General Services Division due to the inclusion of parks and recreation. Approval of new classification of General Services Division Chief, item number 0645. Salary raise 73.3. Addition of four General Services Division Chiefs, one General Services Manager, and one supervising Building Services Worker positions effective December 2016. Deletion upon vacancy of one Parks and Rec Director, one Technology Services Division Chief, three Division Director for General Services, and one Parks Superintendent, one Senior Building Services Worker, and one administrative coordinator positions. And immediate deletion of one area Parks Supervisor, one Fiscal Support Supervisor, and one Contract Specialist Position. Mr. Frappel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was a mouthful. Your board will recall, in September, you authorized and approved the reorganization of General Services in the Parks and Recreation Department, creating a Parks Division within General Services. At that time, we committed to your board that we would come back to mid-year with identified savings that could be realized immediately with the acknowledge that additional savings will be found through process improvement and attrition of staff in areas of overlapping responsibility. By your background, prior to fiscal year 2015-16, the General Services was a division consisting of approximately 150 employees. Since that time, the division has doubled in size to over 300 employees with the inclusion of the Information Technology Services Division mid-year fiscal year 15-16, and now the inclusion of the Parks and Recreation Department. The county realized benefits and efficiency as well as cost savings through the reduction of the Director of I T S, and will do so again with the deletion of the Director of Parks and Recreation Department. Prior to the inclusion in General Services, the Information Technology Services was a division with a Director and three Technology Services Division Chiefs, who oversaw distinction areas within I T S. The Parks and Recreation Department, there were four primary functions within Parks and Recreation: administration, which includes the reservation of all facilities; operation, which includes the ground maintenance and landscaping; park rangers, who provide safety and security within parks; and finally, the planning function for ongoing park improvements. With the merger of kind of those two departments, essentially three departments into one, it compelled us to look at an organizational structure that allowed us to move forward most effectively going forward. In looking at the organizational opportunities, and trust me, we went through nearly a dozen kind of iterations before we landed on the one that we are proposing to your board today, we had five primary guiding principles. First was to make it easy and motivating for staff throughout the organization to collaborate, innovate, and achieve our mission. Secondly, we were looking to ensure that we maintain an appropriate span of control and scope of responsibilities for the positions in the department. Thirdly, and perhaps most importantly, to maximize accountability both internally within the organization as well as externally to our customers and the public. Fourth was establish clear lines of responsibility. And fifth, to maximize budgetary savings both now and into the future for the county. The organization that we are proposing to your board today meets all five of those criteria. You will note in the board letter, in the fiscal impact line, we highlight the kind of resulting budgetary savings that we expect to achieve through this reorganization. And you'll see that in the current fiscal year, for the last remaining six months of the year, we anticipate saving $355,000, almost $356,000. For next year going forward, and for each year going forward, the savings of this reorganization is more than $600,000 a year. And we do this by looking at the responsibilities, to align responsibilities, to consolidate management and staffing within those areas of responsibilities, and to identify positions which, although good positions really were not in a, given the county's fiscal constraint, not in a position to continue to do that. All the time, though, managing that we are going to minimize any impact, any negative impact, to the services provided to our customers and the public. So this is not inconsistent with what we have done in the county in other areas. And I think that it's this type of reorganization that I know that Mr. Pope had success with in the Public Works, in that you're taking operations, combining them, and finding efficiencies. He's been very successful at that. I think that we have seen that example as related to the ETR Board of Trade merger under Ms. Hitchcock and achieving savings. I think this is where the county is going to realize important savings going forward in order to address the shrinking discretion of revenues that the board has available. So I, you know, we put a very lengthy letter together, and I apologize for the length, but I think it was important to include in our correspondence with your board kind of the rationale and the understanding of what we're proposing and why we're proposing that. I'll draw your attention to, let me go to attachment B first. Attachment B is the summary of the positions adds and deletes, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for reading through those. But you'll see that we are proposing to add six positions and to delete 11. At the end of the day, we are continuing to shrink staff. At the end of the day, we're not shrinking responsibilities that we have to perform. What that means is that the workload performed by the positions we're deleting have to be absorbed by other folks. And what we're proposing in this prioritization is really promotional opportunities in order to give folks a chance to step up to the plate, take on additional responsibilities, and to compensate them appropriately. Only those that successfully make it through the process to promote. My hope and anticipation is that the four Division Chiefs that we have will step up and will take the opportunity to go through the process, which will be conducted by Human Resources, and make that leap with us because certainly they bring expertise to the table that I think are important. That being said, there is, this is a promotional opportunity. This is not simply giving people raises for doing the same thing they've always done. And I know that, you know, there's some sentiment out there that this is just some veiled disguise of a pay raise. This is not. This is a real change in the duties required of these positions. So, excuse me. So attachment B kind of outlines those positions of proposed adds and deletes. We outline, I'm sorry, we highlight in the letter that we have gone through the process with the Civil Service Commission to establish the new job specs and have worked with HR with respect to identifying the appropriate salary ranges for the new positions. I think that's all kind of included in the letter. I'm happy to talk more about that. I know Mr. Brown is here if you have questions specifically as well. But let me stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions that your board might have.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any right now. I hear your report done. Are you completed with your presentation?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Let's open the public for public review. Anybody have any comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public review and open it for the board members.
I'll chime in, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brown, can you speak to us how we went about determining the appropriate salary ranges that Mr. Frappel has just laid out to us in regards to the Division Chiefs and the other positions?
Sure. Supervisor Scrivener, through the chair. When a request for, to establish a new classification comes to our office, we generally do a salary survey of our comparable counties to determine whether or not the department's proposed salary range is the correct salary range for a classification. In this case, we were looking at classifications in other counties that were in the assistant level position for a General Services Department. And working with the General Services Division, Mr. Frappel, he provided us with those particular classifications in each comparable county. And we've reviewed the salary. We've put them into our salary study and conducted a salary study of not just the base salary, but also the benefit package that's associated with each county. And we develop an average salary or total compensation package and then compare that to our existing salary range to provide a proposed or recommended salary range for that classification. In this case, the average monthly salary for this particular type of classification is approximately $10,294, and that would be at the highest step level in each county. And that is comparable to our, the recommended and proposed salary range of 73.3 for this position. We also do look at other positions within the county to make sure that they're aligned appropriately, and in this particular case, they are.
Okay. Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't believe that the county of Kern is going to be able to achieve $45 million in budgetary reductions without reducing staff. And we have been able to do that thus far with one exception that I can remember, and I believe it was in your department. We have been able to do that through attrition and perhaps reassignment in some cases. But what you, what you said, Mr. Frappel, is that we are shrinking staff but not responsibilities. We asked the county administrative office, your Division General Services, to take on the IT department. And so that was, that was collapsed into your, into your division. And now, and then we asked you to take on parks. And so what you have done here is you have found a way to, to achieve service delivery for the public and for county departments with less staff and with, in the next fiscal year, an annual savings of over $600,000. I think what you've done, and you, I know that you look to Public Works as an example, same thing. You had departments that were combined. You had to have a reorganization. There were a redistribution of responsibilities for people who took on additional responsibilities. Appropriate promotions and compensation was allocated. But at the end of all this, we're, we are maintaining an appropriate level of service and saving over $600,000. So I want to applaud you for the work of you and your staff. I know that this is probably the 10th or 12th iteration of this staffing structure. I know you worked very hard with them and with personnel. And so I just, I think that this is what we're going to have to look to other departments to achieve the same type of reorganization. I don't know where we go with combining other departments at this point. I think that through our innovation, the lean processes that we're pursuing, we may, we may be able to identify ways in which we can do more of that. But at least for today, I think that you have presented something to us that does exactly what we've asked you to do, which is do more work with less and save money. And so, thank you. And I will support your recommendation.
Supervisor Crouch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with everything Supervisor Scrivener just said. And this proposal is really, I think, is kind of, it's exactly what I had in mind when we started talking about reorganization. And so I applaud what you've done, and I applaud what you brought forward, and I'm happy to second that. Great job.
I'll make a formal motion. Thank you.
Sorry.
Well, I don't think, I'm sorry. I should have. Thank you. Okay. So I'll move staff's recommendation.
We have a motion. We have a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved. All eyes.
Number 31. Item number 31, proposed mid-year capital asset acquisition of Microsoft licenses and sole source agreement with Prosum for license installation services for total amount not to exceed $387,000 and budget transfer from appropriations for contingencies in the amount of $387,000 to budget unit 1160. Is that you, Mr. Frappel?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm joined here by Mr. Devlin, who has all the technical expertise in this, but I will kick this off. Your board is aware, and we've discussed this on numerous occasions, the need for the county to move away from our Groupwise product for email and calendaring into a product that is going to enable the county to move forward and to address security requirements that, newer security requirements that continue to be placed upon us. The Groupwise email and calendar system is over 25 years old. The firm that now owns Groupwise has confirmed to us that they are not in the position to continue to upgrade that to allow us to meet important standards, safety and security standards. We know that in looking at that software, they aren't applying for what we call FedRAMP certification. Those are federal security requirements, nor are they seeking to get State Department of Justice clearances either. So, we are compelled to move to a different calendaring system and an email system. So, the county embarked over a year ago now in looking at the alternatives. And essentially, the only two alternatives the county has for enterprise our size is to either go with a Microsoft product, Office 365, which includes emails, et cetera, or Google. And so, we embarked, as you know, on a process with Google to examine and understand their product, and we did an equal analysis of the Microsoft products. And at the end of the day, I will give you the Reader's Digest, given the time of day. The Reader's Digest version is the most appropriate way to move forward in a product that has federal and state, important federal and state clearances as it relates to Department of Justice and FedRAMP, as I mentioned before, is to move forward with the Microsoft Office 365 solution. In the board letter, what this requires is the acquisition of the licenses for Office 365, as well as the transitional, one-time transitional cost to move our current email into the Office 365 product line. And so, you'll see there highlighted in the fourth paragraph that the current year cost is about $387,000. Excuse me, $230,000 roughly is for one-time conversion costs, and the balance, $156,000, $157,000 is the licensing cost. We do anticipate over time and across the county that we will achieve annual savings of $81,000, almost $82,000. And this is because the Groupwise, to achieve what we will be getting under Office 365, in Groupwise, we have a Groupwise license paid to that firm. We have two other products that we have to add on top of Groupwise. When you look at all the cost of all three of those segments of cost compared to what we'll be getting Office 365, countywide, we'll save $81,000 a year. The office, the letter also goes in to talk about the proposed sole source agreement with Prosum. Prosum is a Microsoft Gold partner. They have successfully worked together to do many transitions of other municipalities as school districts, moving from Groupwise platform to an Office 365 platform. So, we're comfortable with their capability to do so. We have looked at the cost impact, anticipate that the savings is good. But I think importantly, there are several other advantages we get besides just the security measures in the Office 365 package. And they would include a significantly higher level of, each mailbox has a certain amount of space, storage space associated with it. This is 50 times larger end of the Office 365 solution than what we have currently in Groupwise. We have unlimited archiving capability under the Office 365. We're getting Skype for Business, which is the telecommunications ability, teleconferencing ability, and I can go down the list. But there are a lot of advantages. I mean, I think the security is probably enough to sell me on the need to move, but there's a lot of other advantages that come along in the package. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think Microsoft is here in the audience, if you have questions of them. John, of course, is here, if you have got technical questions, and...
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody in the public commission to make comment on this issue? Sean? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Let's bring it back to the board for comment consideration. Supervisor Maggert.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frappel and Mr. Devlin. I suspect it is your back we are writing through this process. Thank you very much for your assistance in this. This is a great opportunity for the county. I heartily endorse it and would make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Brings us to item number 32. Proposed salary increases for classifications at current minimum wage to comply with California minimum wage law effective 24 December 2016, and combine per diem meal preparer, student interns, and per diem senior nutrition driver classifications into a single classification. Mr. Brown.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This past spring, 2016, the state legislature and Governor Brown enacted the Fair Wage Act of 2016, which will increase the California's state minimum wage from $10 an hour to $15 an hour by January 1, 2022. The first stage of those increases happens this January 1, 2017, increasing the minimum wage from $10 per hour to $10.50 per hour. The list of classifications provided to you within our board letter identifies the current classifications that are filled with county employees who will need to be increased to meet the legal requirements of the Minimum Wage Act. The total fiscal impact for this particular change is $3,000 per fiscal year. We are also recommending, along with the increase of these classifications from $10 per hour to $10.50 per hour, a restructuring of three classification series that are flexible classification series, the per diem meal preparer into a single classification that's an hourly rate of $10.50, the per diem senior home delivery driver classification series, which has four different levels into a single classification that's $10.50 per hour, and the student intern classification series, which has four different levels into one student intern classification level at $10.50 per hour. As we go forward and implement this new law, year to year, more classifications are going to be impacted, and more employees are going to be impacted, and the wage increase and impact on the county budget is going to start to build significantly. This is not a significant change compared to three years from now. We anticipate there's going to be a major impact. So, our division is currently conducting a comprehensive salary study for several represented classifications, and will be looking at the ones that will be mostly impacted by this minimum wage law to determine whether or not we should compact other classification series into single classifications, increase the number of classifications that are paid an hourly rate and not the salary range that we currently have structured, and bring those recommendations back to your board. But this is the first step in that process, and our recommendation to your board is that you approve the increase in salary range for those classifications described above effective December 24, 2016, which is the next pay period that includes the first of the year, and approve the reclassification of those classification series into single ten classifications effective December 24, and refer to the Human Resources Division to amend the department positions and salary schedule according to those recommendations.
Thanks, Brown. Let's open it for the public. Let's close it to the public, and bring it back to the board. Any thoughts?
Staff's recommendation.
Motion.
Second.
Supervisor Maggert, I see your name here. Is that because I didn't clear the queue?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion of second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
That brings us to the end. I know Supervisor Crouch wants to say something, but we need to, we'll go for a motion soon to adjourn to Monday, January 9, 2017, at 12 noon for selection of chairman.
I want to make that motion in honor of John Nylund and his long career with the county.
Great work, John. Thank you. We're adjourned.